Free to extending the the time period. So those are with regards to the Watkins Avenue Crossing Safety Improvements. The items that are included, which includes the quad gates are listed in the MOU. These items are just kind of a listing of the various topics. To provide the timing and the estimated funding. To clarify further what's already in the agreement. Does that help answer your questions on Exhibit D? Councilmember Lewis?
I lost my internet connection, so.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I can.
Yeah, no, I'm sure you answered it perfectly fine is. Did you answer the other ones about section three seeking?
Not yet. I just covered Exhibit D. With regards to section three of the agreement as indicated at the meeting. Last week, most of the funding is coming from outside sources or intended to come from outside sources. Rather than the JPB's. Current budget, there are a few items that they are indicating would come directly from their current budget. And so when it says seeking funding, that's both for the grants as well as seeking fundings from. The Transportation Authority.
But is there a certainty that they will get that funding?
I'll have to pass that question on to.
And if they don't get the funding, then what?
Well.
There's nothing in the agreement that makes it clear that they have to get the funding. In order to continue to perfect this agreement.
That's correct.
That doesn't make me comfortable. I don't know. Does it make everybody else comfortable?
Nope.
Doesn't make me comfortable.
Doesn't make me comfortable either. That's why I wanted to put these things. From the recital into the contract with the word shall and we should have some sort of reverting. We should have the services. We should have the services until until they do meet their obligations. Or if we do it earlier, then then it reverts back and they give us the services. So.
Yeah.
That's not a question, so I'll save it for my comments.
Good, I'd like to hear. So anyway.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question, which is a broad one. It's just is. I'm looking at the changes from last version to this version. And my question is, is there anything in this version that strengthens? Our certainty gives us more certainty than we had in the last that we had our meeting last week.
Good question.
Well, I think that the the biggest change with regards to that is the change in the effective date before there was. A push out on the effective date. Associated with the allocation of funds from the TA. And this has actually pushed it. To being upon execution, but I believe that Sam trans or the sorry, the JPB. JPB's meeting will be following that of the TA. At the beginning of November.
But straight up answer Mike is no, there is nothing in this agreement that makes it stronger. In terms of the shall and the must that council member Widmer was articulating that had been added to it. In fact, I think it's gone a little bit back in the other direction.
I do too.
And that's only because I think Caltrain, to be frank, is is not. Is not willing to commit the JPB's funding to this, these particular efforts because they need to see grants and other things from other funds. They don't have the funds to commit to the project.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, okay, I'll ask the question. So it looks to me like it just if you just Robert, if you could just confirm. Okay, the actions that are being taken by Caltrain. Will be completed after we agree that they can stop service. So we'll have stopped service. If that's if just correct me if I'm wrong, we'll have stopped service. And and then they're going to perform their obligations or maybe not. Is that correct?
Well, according to the schedule on Exhibit D, they can. They can stop service, but there are. A few commitments with regards to items that are actually funded by the JPB.
Yeah, there needs to be a linkage. That's that's I'm looking for a linkage, you know, so they're stopping service, you know. Quickly before before we get things before they get their money, things like that. But that's how I read this. And if I'm wrong, then please show me exactly where.
You're not, you're not.
Sebastian, would you like to comment on that?
Or city attorney?
Sure, I'm happy to comment just to kind of clarify the timeline that's under discussion here. So Appendix D lays out a variety of actions that the railroad would undertake to fulfill the. The different obligations we're committing to as part of this agreement. The initial ones of those would be funded out of the Caltrain budget. The many of the other ones would be funded with money we intend to seek from the San Mateo County. We are going to the TA if this deal moves forward on November 5th. That is the same day that the JPB would take action on this. And so the result would be that on November 6th, prior to anyone actually signing the agreement. The vast majority of the funding needed for the improvements would be secure. That would include all of the funding for the station removal that would be coming from the JPB's budget. Would include the contribution, the entirety of the contribution to the town center improvements and access improvements. And it would include fifty percent of the funding needed for the quad gates and the permanent fence. That money would be secured in advance of the agreement sign. We would then continue to seek external grants to help offset. Any additional incurred money that would be required from the TA. We have ultimately enough funding through the TA to fund the entirety of the improvements. However, it is our desire to stretch that money as far as we can. And so over the course of the coming year, there are a number of other grants we would apply to. We have an outstanding application at this point. That we're hoping to hear back on which would fully fund this project. Were we to reach a point where we needed the rest of the money in order to meet our obligations in Section D and to continue advancing the project? We would go back to the TA to get the balance of the funds if we were unsuccessful in seeking. And so I wanted to to lay that timeline out to, I think, characterize. At least some of what what the risk to the town here is. It is really about. How part of the money for the quad gates? That would be not fully secured at the time the agreement would be signed and any decision to stop service. So I think that's to kind of bound it. That's what we're talking about. I think the other thing to be clear and in kind of conversations with with our attorneys. We've pushed the language in this agreement as far as we can. We are not able to obligate JPB funds that do not exist. And so we can't create a financial commitment for the railroad if there is not. The funding identified in budgets to back it up. That's the case right now. So this isn't. A negotiating tactic on our part. This is just legally, this is as far as we can push the language in the agreement.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of clarification? And we can address any questions of clarification that come up in the course of discussion during the discussion. But now I'll take public comment.
So Mr. Colin, because you're the only one on the line that I know wants to make a public comment, I'll let you go first. For anybody else joining, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can use the participants option at the bottom of your screen. Or use the chat window and there's a phone number that you can send a text to if you're struggling with any of those. Mr. Conlon, you have the floor. You will be under the three minute time limit.
Thank you very much. I think the first point I made in my letter is this question that the JPB is. Is taking a very strong comment that they're not sure that they will continue service if the proposition RR does not pass. And the other point that Mr. Sebastian just mentioned is that he was going to get assurances from the. TA before the JPB voted. Now normally that sequence. Is reversed. The JPB meets in the morning and the TA meets in the afternoon. So unless they're going to change the times. And days that the JPB will not know when it meets on the fifth. Whether the TA has approved it or not, unless they change the meetings around. I I'm sure that's not a big deal, but I I'm not sure that. Mr. Sebastian is aware of that or whether he's taking care of that. The other issue I want to point out is the. If the if the proposition fails, it's identical to what happened two years ago when the San Mateo County had a half cent sales tank. At the day of the election, it failed. And five days later, it passed. Because of the late voting coming in with the with the votes in several of the districts. The votes change over a five day period. So they really the. JPB and the TA will not know for sure if it's a close vote. At the time of their meetings on the fifth or whatever that that that's works. And I think the the. The questions about the lack of certainty and some of the funding, I think, was addressed by a council member. Lewis and and it it's in my question, my comments are laid out in a in my memo. And I would request that they extend the fencing from Maple to Watkins, just from a safety standpoint. Because, you know, we did have a suicide there to my recollection, just because somebody crawled under the bushes. And normally fencing would stop that type of of action. So. And the due dates on that Schedule D, I think you guys addressed it in your your comments, but I would think that. That with a three year commitment that there ought to be some certainty. And if I I didn't study it closely, but. The the JPB has some penalties for the city of Atherton later in the document that are quite severe. So I'm not sure why Atherton wouldn't have the similar right to impose penalties on the JPB. If they don't meet the dates on Schedule D that are estimated. I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any other public comments?
No, I don't have any others. I don't see anyone with a hand raised or an indication.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Comments on the council?
If I can to the mayor.
Please, Kerry.
First of all, I, you know, one, I want to thank everybody for all the hard work that's been done on all sides at the staff level. And. You know, I I it's difficult because, you know, I think that we not nobody here has a crystal ball. And tying this to a guaranteed source of funding. On the JPB or the TA's part is. To me, it's not realistic. I think that the way the agreement is written at this point. Gives us as much assurance in a short timeframe. That also helps us reduce our potential risk. Because we'll know things rather quickly. As Sebastian was identifying the timeframes for other the JPB and the TA to acknowledge the agreement. And I and I'm sure that staff has already addressed a lot of these things. This is not going to be a surprise to anybody on their side. As far as, you know, the discussions about the Atherton Station. Have surely been run by members of the board already. So. You know, I I'm interested in moving forward. I think that staff cleaned up as much as we can clean up with staff. I I just, and I cannot predict, and I don't think anybody can. And even consider what the potential risk of RR in all hopes that RR does pass. But, you know, we're dealing with what's in front of us. So. Those are my comments.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
I'm happy to.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, my observation is that. A lot of that, I think staff has done a good job with this, and I think that. It's not a question of going back and renegotiating with with the JPB. I feel like. These are real issues that we've we've come across and we're not going to craft our way around them with some kind of different language in the agreement. But I believe that we have lost a lot of leverage over the last year or so in this this thing and I'm. I further believe that Caltrain could do it, could close the station without our approval. And it leaves us in a very difficult situation to negotiate a. You know, a strong position here. I think that that Caltrain has done. Quite a bit to try to meet our requests when they don't technically have to. And I don't believe that if we wait longer, we'll be in a stronger negotiating position. So I don't see the agreement changing. So, you know, I wish I wish it was better. I wish it was, wish we had more certainty. I wish they were doing more. More things to help clean up that area, but. I think this is about as good as we're able to get at the current time. So that's that's my opinion.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Yeah. So first off, I, you know, I think that our committee has done a good job at working with staff and Sebastian, you know, I think that, you know, Caltrain has. Tried to come up with something. However, there, you know, I think the agreement still is lacking first in in my mind. First off, you know. I mentioned that I I would feel more comfortable moving things out of the recital. Unfortunately. Our attorney or whoever decided not to do that for whatever reason. Secondly, I I don't see any recourse if if none of this happens. So we haven't had a very responsive and productive discussion with with Caltrain over the years, you know. That they, you know, brought down our service and, you know, now we just have weekend service. I would feel more comfortable. If there was some more commitment on their part of what they're going to do. And and continue the service until some of that has actually been realized, you know, because right now I the way I read the contract, there's no recourse. I agree with Mike that they could just decide to go do that, but, you know, I just don't see that that's. A positive, a positive step forward. So a commitment to continue the service, not cut it off by, you know, by February. Continue the service until they get some of this work done, I think, is 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 what they need to do. Secondly, I asked for a ninety nine year lease. Okay, now realize we got a twenty five year lease. Well. You know, I think that we should have a longer lease for having access to that that property. You know, I don't know why we can't get that if their intention is to allow us to continue to use that land for perpetuity. Okay. So so, you know, I I don't think the agreement is is. Substantial enough. And they could make some minor changes to it or we, you know, staff, I'm I'm willing to have these these minor changes done outside of the. You know, right now, but I think that we should have these minor changes in the in the contract before we move forward, before I'm comfortable in moving forward. That's it.
Okay, Elizabeth?
I'm gonna unmute. So it seems to me, and I just have to ask the question, it seems to me that. If you were going to sell your house. And you signed away all your rights to the buyer. Who only had half of the money, but you've signed away all of your rights to your house and you've left your house and. They can take over the house and. But you've only got half of the money and they've got a promise to seek and find the rest of the money somehow. We're just left with, I I don't think any of us would agree to a term like that, and that's kind of what we're agreeing to. I have to agree with Councilmember Widmer that the ninety nine year lease. At least fifty one years, you know, twenty five years is like a blink in the eye. I mean, maybe I won't live another twenty five years, but I'm. Pretty sure gonna try. And it just seems like it's it's a pretty short term and we could just. I don't know, it just seems like it's. We're just leaving a lot on the table and I understand from Councilmember Lumper's viewpoint that. We've over the last year, we may have lost some negotiating. Leverage, but, you know, circumstances happened with COVID and a whole others, you know, a bunch of things. But it just seems like the answer that was given to Councilmember Lumper's, does this. Changed and revised agreement, is it stronger or weaker than the one that we were looking at last week? And the answer was it's weaker. So why would we go forward? And the other question I have is, why is it there this rush? Because Sebastian last time said that it, you know, they're going to meet again in December, you know, the November 5th. Meeting with the TA and the JPB. That is a a date they've got. I mean, they're going to have another meeting in December and. I just don't think that we have certainty in knowing that Caltrain is going to do the things that. We need them to do, want them to do per the terms of this contract within a timeframe that would be reasonable. That's kind of my comment on that.
Okay, thank you. So let me make a couple of comments. First of all, it it's not a twenty five year lease. It's a twenty year lease. And yes, we add the so when the subcommittees met, we asked for the longer lease and this was the maximum that Caltrain was comfortable with. I think that I I don't agree that the contract is weaker. I I mean, you know, there's the change of the word. That they will seek. And or they intend to seek. I mean, that basically it's an intention issue. And they're going to the JPB to get this commitment of fifty percent and they're doing that over the next week. If and we're not expected to sign the agreement and they're not going to sign the agreement until after that's done, as Sebastian clarified. So I think that if it gives. The council comfort to, we we can approve this and say we won't sign it until the JPB has made the commitment that Caltrain is seeking. I don't think Caltrain frankly expects to sign this unless the JPB does make that commitment. I I do think that a longer lease would be more in our interest, but this is the most that they were willing to provide. The other thing I'll say is, you know, this isn't a situation where you're selling a house. We don't own the house. We're 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 just benefiting from the fact that the trains stop in our town. We don't have any contractual rights around that. We have some moral issues and we have some goodwill issues. Which I think Caltrain has responded responsibly to. You know, they they closed the Paul Avenue Station in San Francisco and it ended up being a horrendous mess for them and for San Francisco. And that's not what is happening here. That's absolutely in our interests. I think there's no doubt about it that that's in our interests. And I think that what we've gotten Caltrain to agree to in the agreement is in our interests if it gets done. There's no doubt that we're giving up a real asset of the town, but it's not like we have control over it. This is something they have control over and they've come to us in a goodwill, good faith effort to. Have us not object to what they're planning to do. And I think we've gotten what if we get it will be very valuable to the town. So I agree with what Kerry said. I think we should go forward and approve this, and I think if the council feels more comfortable with it. To say that we won't sign it until after the TA has approved. These two funding requests that Caltrain is going to them for, then I I think that's fine. George and Mona had her hand up also.
Go ahead, Mona.
Oh, thank you. I thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out a few clarifying points. Staff did not ignore at least a few council members' requests to incorporate recital P into the agreement. We took a belt and suspenders approach, so recital P is left into the contract and then we added. Language in Section Three of the Agreement under Responsibilities. So that. We we addressed that. I also wanted to just explain that it's not lost on your me or your staff that the terms here are not. As clear or as firm as you or staff would like. But in talking with Caltrain about this, there's essentially four scenarios that could occur. And at the end of the day, it's your decision, one way or another. We are just trying to provide you with as much information as possible to help you with that decision. But of course, if Measure RR passes, then there's sufficient funding. And we largely don't have any issues with this and and we can rest assured that a lot of the. Requirements in here will be fully funded and committed to. That's kind of the best case scenario, but. As we've also acknowledged, we don't know if that's going to happen until after sometime after the election. If Measure RR does not pass, however. We are not going to have funding and Caltrain is not going to use any of its funds towards the improvements that are articulated in the agreement. They're going to go to the most basic Caltrain needs possible. So anything that. We wished was part of this agreement, if we sought to enter into this agreement after the election and Measure RR did not pass, it would be very unlikely. And Mr. Petty could probably say not at all possible that Caltrain would commit to any of this right now. However, if we enter into a contract before that time, then we know that Caltrain will go to STA. To to secure some funds for these improvements, which are largely going to contribute to the town center improvements. And most of the other improvements that are illustrated in Exhibit D of the agreement. Okay? And if we don't have an agreement before then, then Caltrain will not go to before the STA and ask for funding. So we will not have any of these improvements. So the reason why this agreement is before you today and it's in in the town's best interest to consider it now than after the election. Is that you will have some certainty with respect to some of the funding for some of the improvements. As compared to potentially no funding and no improvements and the potential for the station closure.
Thank you. George. Just to also clarifying remarks as well, the maintenance and use agreement is a twenty year. Lease, but it has automatic five year extensions on there. And there's no limit that I could see in the agreement of those automatic five year extensions. And then, of course, it's subject to termination by its terms. And then within Exhibit D, the only improvement within Exhibit D that Caltrain can technically do. Without closing the station are the quad gates. Everything else, I believe, requires that the station be closed because they're removing platforms, they're removing. Fencing or adding permanent fencing and adding temporary fencing to block off the station and they're giving town control of the station property area. They can't do any of those things if the station is still active.
Can I make a comment, please?
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Can we please add in that description on Exhibit D, the quad gates at. I made that comment in my questions and I don't know that it was. Answered, but I'd like to see the clarification of the Watkins Safety Improvements to be mean quad gates.
That that was actually addressed Vice Mayor Lewis. It's under Section F. On page six of forty six in the agreement itself, Watkins Avenue Safety Improvements is a host of other improvements to include the four quadrant gates.
Okay, all right. I I just, you know, was looking at the summary, I guess, and it'd be easy to put quad gates on there.
Yeah, it is. As George said, it's in there.
Okay, fine. Thank you. And thank you, Mona, for your explanation and giving us the. Alternatives. And it really helps. And it really helps me to understand and I appreciate the mayor's analysis also. He's been very, very involved with this and really has had his head around and I appreciate all of the hard work and I'm sorry that I'm just kind of being belligerent about it, but I just really want it to be the best that we can do. And if this is
No, you're not being belligerent and it it's not just me. I mean, Kerry and I both worked on this subcommittee and we we had many meetings, we spent a lot of time on it, we we pushed the issues that we're discussing. You all just haven't been as involved in those discussions, but I'm, I I think we're fully airing them out now. Yeah, Bill, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, so with regards to the use of the property, if you read those comments that are on page 1746 and attachment two, they can be canceled at any time. And they can be canceled if the railroad wants to use it. We also know that high speed rail and the strategic plan that the that the Caltrain has put together says they're going to go with four tracks. So they'll be canceling this because they have to use the right of way. I just don't see that there's any teeth in this agreement. And that's that's the concern. So the benefits are, the benefits are, we want to use the space. The other benefit is we would like to be able to have a quiet, an extension of the quiet zone and the and the safety improvements over at at Watkins. That's what we want. I agree with that's what we want. And we all voted, say, let's go move forward with this discussion. But, you know, the it's a, you know, it's, I don't say it washy washy, but it is kind of, you know, it's it's if there's going to be something where we give up access to that property, it should be at our sole discretion. Or that it has to be mutually agreed. This it doesn't say that here. And so like, that's one of my concerns. I have several concerns, but this is one of them, a key one, since you guys were just talking about it. So anyway, that's my point.
I thank you. Kerry, did you want to make a comment?
No.
Okay, is there further comments or can I get a motion?
Sorry, I can give you a motion, a motion. A motion for the city manager to execute the M O U and the maintenance agreement. And the agreed date that the council had spoke about at the same time or after the J P B and the TA have signed on.
Great. Thank you.
I'm I'm sorry, can we get some, could could we clarify that? Just so I'm I'm a little confused by that motion exactly. Could could somebody re reclarify it or rearticulate it?
I think there's a motion written in your staff report, isn't it? I mean,
I don't think that's the motion, though.
I think Kerry's making, Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I understood you to say was to approve the motion recommended by the staff with the clarification that we not enter into this agreement, not sign it until after the J P B has approved the funding that they're being asked to approve.
That is correct. Thank you very much.
I I can second that motion.
Good.
Councilmember Weest?
I. I I want to give, if someone has a discussion point on the motion, this is a big deal for us. I want to give them the opportunity to make a make a statement if anybody on the council wishes to. Okay, not hearing any. Go ahead. Let's take a roll call.
Weest?
Hi again.
Widmer?
I'm not comfortable with the agreement with the commitments, so no.
Lempers?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolio?
Hi. Okay, we're now moving to item number four.
Okay. Thank you, council and mayor. So this is to approve the governing resolution, which was last brought to council May 2019. The major changes that you're going to see here are reducing the rail committee from 10 members to nine members based on general attrition. There are some updates and changes to the rail policy, which Robert Avadia, Director of Public Works, can speak to if you'd like. Some of the other changes were formatting, minor changes. We removed the details and terminology for staggering the terms and just made reference to the Resolution 1907, which set those those stagger terms in place. And again, the other the other changes that are substantial are changes related to the rail policy. And if you have any questions on that, Robert Avadia is available to to take your comment.
Are there any questions of clarification?
Yeah, I have a question. Please. How did we get to 10 members of the rail committee? Was there an affirmative decision to that for some reason or how'd that happen? Rick's laughing at me.
I I I know the history. Kerry Kerry intimately knows the history.
Go ahead. I will jump in then. Go ahead.
No, you can go ahead, George.
My my understanding is that there was a lot of participation on the rail committee. So the council at the beginning did not even have a limit to the number of members of the rail committee. And then over time, it's it's been reduced over time to give it more clarity in terms of its size. The suggestion here is to decrease it by attrition to nine so that there's an odd number on the committee rather than a positive number.
Also, at the time, it was a lifetime appointment.
I was gonna say that's that's what some of the members
It's like being on the Supreme Court.
Except it was an expanded number.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Packing packing the committee.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let me see if there's any public comment on this issue.
Don't see any hands raised or any messages. I think most folks were here for
Okay, great. Let's bring it back for comments from the council.
I think this is a good move.
Right.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Want to have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Widmer?
Yes.
Weest?
Hi.
Lempers?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolio.
Yes. And I think that ends our special meeting.
All right.
Unless there are additional public comments.
Unless there's an additional public comment, exactly. Harry, none. I guess that we will next get together the day after the election. Is that right? I think that's right.
Correct, November, November 4th, 3 P M.
We have our Dropbox here if any of you'd like to visit and make
Greg Conlon raised his hand. Greg?
Greg dropped.
He's 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 here. I've
Oh, there he is.
You're still muted. I'm giving you an option to unmute.
I wasn't clear on your motion, whether you meant to say the J P B or the TA when you when you signed the agreement. Did you mean to say that?
The TA.
You said the J P B, I think, and it's really
Well, the J P B is going to the TA to request the funding.
So there's implicit that the TA would act before the the J P B did.
Before the documents signed.
Right, which was what Sebastian clarified was the intention.
But and there is that problem of of the sequence of the meetings, but Sebastian can probably figure that one out.
Hopefully. Thank you, Greg.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you guys later.